We'll be officially called to order. If I could ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States.
The agenda, I was asked if no one has an issue switching. What did you want switched, Corey?
I think just moving Executive Session below or switch nine and 10, right?
Yeah.
Session be held in here.
Right.
So if you move Council Administrator Reports up to number nine and Executive Session down to 10. They want to stay through the entirety of the meeting.
Per the request to change the agenda, if there's no further changes or questions, could we get a motion to make the change as noted?
Motion, can I get a second?
Got a motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, we've got public comments. Obviously, we have some individuals here that wish to address the council. I'm going to read our issue with public comment time. Persons who wish to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda may do so as that agenda item is called. Persons who wish to address the City Council regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time when called upon by the mayor. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court or with other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. So at this time, who wants to speak? And we have recycling, I assume, and Lee? Go ahead and step up, Lee. Pull the mic down and...
Is the mic going on?
It is, and your time's starting.
I really don't like coming to these meetings. I'm not a good speaker. Somebody would be a lot better than me, but I'm shocked that there's nobody in the city that notices this. But the codes are not being enforced on the cleanliness codes, public eyeshores, public nuisance. We have many buildings downtown and one right near the code office that has broken windows, boarded up, and there are penetrations in the boarding. That is against the code. They need to be held responsible to the code. This just only makes sense. There's no reason not to enforce the codes. I found this in my card tonight. It says, "Be the best version of you." Well, I think the city needs to do that also. It's not the best version of Iowa that we could have. If we have a will, there's a way, and I don't think the city has the will to make this city really clean. There's lots of cities that do. You can go to other cities and they won't look like Iowa with all the broken sidewalks. I'm on a mobility scooter and have trouble even navigating around. So let's enforce these codes. The city will look a lot more beautiful. I think a block grant will be available through the funding that Corey has mentioned for the block grants that'll be through this new government stuff. I've got a paper on it if you guys need to read it, see how to apply for this, and I think we can do a whole vitalization downtown. I also think we need to bring in the persons that are locked up in jail to come help with this. They're laying around getting a free bed. Why should they have that? They're able-bodied, they can come help. They need to have this for the recycling also. Get the ones that are not a threat, not an escape risk, they can come work. There's no reason this can't be done. I love the little article in the paper about that. The next thing, off of State Avenue, I believe it is, there's no signage to get to the hospital. I think that needs to be done. And third, I support what the people are doing with the recycling. I just really vote for that and hope everything goes great with that, but I think the way to do that is the people from the jail need to come out and put them to work. That just makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lee. Anyone else? Dan?
I'm Dan Davis, pastor at First Presbyterian Church and been involved with recycling pretty much since I moved into town a little over four years ago, first with Rotary. But one of the things that my wife and I have consistently done in our time together for 26 years is has done what I call the first line of volunteering in recycling, and that's deciding in our home that what we're going to do is we're going to recycle anything and everything we can so that we can reduce the amount of trash that we throw away in any given week. When we first moved to Minden, Nebraska, I was approached within my first couple of months, and the guy said, "Hey, you're that new pastor, aren't you?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "I'm Paul. I drive the city garbage truck." I said, "Oh, okay, thanks. Hi, Paul." He said, "You don't have much trash, do you?" And I said, "No, we try to recycle everything we can. If we have one bag a week, that's probably a lot for us." And Minden was one of those towns that had to make a decision for recycling because their county landfill was closed. The state came in and said, "This is full. Unless you've got more land, you need to start transferring all of your garbage that you collect in this county. You need to pay for it to be hauled off to someplace that can take it." And that's when Minden started taking recycling very, very seriously. And they decided that the best thing for them to do was to have a pickup truck and a trailer and two people. And it started off, it was every other week, and when more and more people started to recycle, then they said, "We're now going to pick up your recycling at Curbside every week," and they did. Now, I was never at their facility, so I can't tell you what they built to handle that and to sort it or what they did with it. I just know that they picked it up. In Beloit, Kansas, where we live, once again, there is a transfer station there. As the cost of the county having to take care of that and thereby the cost for the city of Beloit to dump things at the transfer station went up. The county went in, went ahead and built a recycling center on their fairbanks. They had enough room, and they put up a nice center that had a loading dock where things could be loaded. Once they got bailed, they had one baler, and they used the equivalent in Mitchell County of Tri Rivers here, folks, to help run that facility. We know that in Coffee County, they have decided this is something we're going to invest in, maybe because they simply have the money to do that. And I know each county is different. But as I look at it, what makes sense to me is there needs to be a building that can handle it, where a baler could be installed so that would be the most efficient to use, where there would be room to store baled recyclables, and that would be a place that could also be conducive to having people come up and drop off. We've always had that here, at least we've tried to have that, and for the most part, I'd say at least 75% of the people make a good faith effort to rinse and make sure the stuff they bring in is clean, and they sort it to the best of their abilities. Now, it doesn't mean that it doesn't have to be gone through. It does before we do any baling. But what is saved is what goes into the landfill. And I would say the efforts of recycling in four years probably made it able, allowed however many tons of shredded tires to be dumped in our landfill that were supposed to be recycled at pretty much as a zero sum. We kept out enough that that could be added. And, you know, what I've read about the landfill, it faces a few more problems than just spending millions of dollars to create a new cell. I was reading about a few other things.
Your three minutes are up, Dan. If you want someone else to speak, they can.
I think it makes sense for the city to really look into doing this. I'd be happy to help answer any questions, but hey, if I as a pastor and a handful of other volunteers can figure it out, I bet you the city could too. Does anybody else want to...
County too, to ask them for help?
It's probably going to have to be a partnership, yeah. It probably will have to be, yeah.
I'm not on the committee, but you all know what I think. I think we should recycle. For years and years, I've taken all my stuff over to Wichita, and then Rotary come in, and now these four or five people that worked their butts off are doing it. And I went out a couple of weeks ago, and it was locked, and I called his wife, and I said, "Why is it locked?" And I figured why, because four or five people can't do that. But I think, and I keep telling everyone, I'm the oldest one here. I see what recycling does for people on our earth. I think we need to do it. I agree the county should help, but we really need it. I missed four minutes, three minutes.
Karen Gilpin, and I am part of the committee, and there are only five of us on that committee. And let me tell you, it is a workout every time we go out there. We don't have the equipment, and I spend two or three hours when I'm there, just sorting and going through and trying to figure out how we can do this better, calling people. I texted lots of people, and I see several of them here. I bet I got 15 texts back that said, "I would be there if I could, but I can't." One of those was Donna Culver. She's 90 years old. She's there every time we have recycling, and she took a picture of the bucket of stuff. She says, "I'm going to have to throw this away. I want to have recycling." And I think it's ridiculous. I never put my trash out more than once a week, and sometimes it's not even once a week, and that's when all the grandkids are there. I think it's ridiculous that this city has twice-a-week pickup, and that could be eliminated. And right there, you've got people that could be helping with some of it. We need to come up with something, and again, I agree that the county needs to be in on this, too.
I think you walked in after I read my statement. Just a reminder, three minutes is what we're...
Yeah, I read the City Council minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've only been here for a year, so I don't know a lot of, like, maybe personal politics that go on in small towns or things like that, but I was kind of raised, being raised kind of like most of my childhood in Oregon, you're kind of raised to be an environmentalist out there, so you have like your red bucket for glass, you have your green bucket for all of your clippings, you have your gray bucket for all your trash, and then you have like an extra blue bucket where you would put all your plastic, like your monk jugs and things like that. So coming from that perspective, all of my life, I have recycled. There's never been like a day, like you would get fined if you put any type of, if you put your compost in with your plastics. If you put your pizza boxes that had food on it, you would be fined for putting that in the recyclables because it had food on it. So we took it to the extreme out there, but coming here, it was odd to have the two-day trash pickup and to be like, why is it, on Monday they pick up, and then the next day you have off, and then you've all of a sudden got enough trash for them to come pick it up? So for me, it's maybe, are we using our resources correctly? Can the city, in a way, find a space to have a recycling on Wednesdays? Would be really cool if you could have them, we pick it up. I don't know, I don't know what the, maybe like the cost of landfills or things like that, but I do know that fines also help the city if you didn't follow in the laws of the recycling for that. It could be, you would get fined, and that would be another income for the city. I mean, I know, but there's been like a little bit of talk that it's the trashy people that will leave their trash on the road and that they won't pick it up, which is the reason why we need trash pickup for two days. And so I know that that's maybe like a personal judgment going towards people that maybe haven't had the best hygiene or maybe like a normal childhood to where they would have learned those behaviors, but I don't know if, maybe it's trashy people that don't know how to pick up their trash and more so like we haven't educated them on why recycling is important. And so I think instead of calling people trashy, and that's why we have to have two days a week pickup for our more maybe low-income housing or people who just don't have those proper skills to do that, educating them. But honestly, I was just raised, I was raised to just be like a little Oregon tree hugger. I'm not a tree hugger, but you did have to replace too for everyone that you cut down, so. But I was just raised on recycling, and it had nothing to do with any type of political thing. It just had to do with that. That's just what you did because it made it sorting for everybody, and it was easier on a lot of our processing in the cities and towns, so.
Thank you, Mary. Go ahead.
Good evening, Maria Unruh. I am a mom of a young child and just thinking a lot about our climate and our earth and really being a leader for our children and our youth of the community. I just, one thing I just really want to do is just challenge the bright minds that are in this room, the leaders in this room, to really take this seriously, think innovatively, think creatively, and really bring the community in. We want to keep recycling here, what's important to us, so continuing to keep that door open and having discussions and, again, just recognizing that we need to take care of our youth. We need to be a leader. And so I just challenge everyone to embrace that and continue the conversation and continue to be thinking critically on how we can keep this in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I'm Sharon Atlee. I've lived here ever since I've been married, which is 59 years, and I haven't been real good about recycling until recently. The last few years, I've tried to do more. I feel very strongly that we need to recycle. Sure, we have the landfill. It's not called the dump, it's the landfill, but it costs, as everyone knows, a lot to make those places to throw all that trash. We can save that money. We recycle, and it will save the land for our kids, grown kids, future generations coming up. The idea, and I'm not an authority on it, you'd have to check with lawyers to be sure, but to my knowledge, we cannot use the prisoners. At one time, the county did have them going out. They had to have people go with them, which took the manpower and stuff to be there to watch them. There's also an insurance problem, so I don't feel like it's feasible to plan on using the prisoners. I know I don't like them just sitting up there and everything, too, but there are responsibilities there. I feel like not only should Iowa and the county be in on this, but Humboldt people have been working with the recycling, so they're interested in it, so why aren't we asking the other cities to also go in on it? But I'm very strongly for it. I feel like that's part of the commissioners, your councilmen's, to come with an idea to help do this problem. It's going to take everyone working together, not one group saying, "They're the ones that it's going to save them money, let them do it." We all need to work on it. Thank you.
I'm Kay Walker, and I also want to show my support for the recycling. I started recycling when they started collecting newspapers, and as life has progressed, my household creates a lot of cardboard, and I hate to see that going to the landfill every week. I had started taking that to the recycling center myself. I'd take my cans, my plastic, put it all in the bins, and I would usually have a bag of trash, maybe two bags of trash a week. That's it. However, the first day that we did not have the recycling because I had stuff accumulated to take over there when I found out it was closed, I had two full cans that were overflowing as well as numerous boxes that had to be taken to the landfill instead of being recycled as they had been for the past three or four years. So just wanted to show my support, and again, I agree with everyone else that Allen County definitely needs to be involved in this, too, working together for the good of everyone in Allen County. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Kinsel. I'm here for recycling. I've lived 10 years in Palm Beach County where recycling did have fines, but compliance was never an issue. Everybody graciously complied. I never knew a single person did not comply or get a fine. Westport, Connecticut with my other residents, they had deposits in Connecticut on bottles. Nobody even brought them in for the deposit back that is recycled. It's never been an issue. It seems so wrong just to throw away your garbage when you could be pro-environment and forward-thinking for the future, for the younger generation. I see lots of potential. There's lots of role models out there to model off of, so just be creative, be open-minded, and let's make it happen.
Anybody else?
I'm Elizabeth Wilcox. I just also want to second what everyone else said. I support recycling. I'm really surprised that we don't have it established here already. Twice-day trash pickup, I didn't know any community ever did that until I moved here. We definitely get by with one dumpster full of trash once a week. My household does. We send a lot of our recycling over, and so we don't have that much trash. And now we have a lot more trash because we can't send it over to the recycling center, so. I think you guys are perfectly capable of helping come up with a solution along with the community. I think we all support it, so, thanks.
Anyone else for public comment time? All right.
Just one more quick thing. I think the other big piece of the puzzle...
Appreciate you guys' passion. Thanks for coming and discussing this with us. Have a good evening. Thank you. All right, council, consent agenda. Does anyone have any comments? I have one thing I'd like to bring up on the... Here it is. I was looking at the, I don't know where I put it. On the Farm City Days issue with the scooters and golf carts, can we ask them to print a placard that, for official Farm City Days use only, so that we can differentiate from anybody else that may want to try to take advantage of...
Sure. That's just they'd have a problem with that, Steve. Well, I'd say, Steve, I think you just did. Unless anyone else on the council has any issue with that, we can let them know.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, because somebody will try to take advantage of it, so. Anyone questions, comments? If not, can we get a approval for the consent agenda, a motion?
I'm making a motion. We accept the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Roundtable of the Bill Project.
All right, Mayor, the, well, there's really nothing more I can add than's already in there. And we've been talking about this for a while, and we let you know that the BIL is a thing now, and money is flowing like you wouldn't believe at Washington, and so we're going to try to tap into as much of that as we can. The five projects that you have listed in front of you are not all-encompassing. One thing we've learned about the BIL and the research is that there's a lot more money available out there for a lot of things that we already do. And so the five you have, the Bear Stele Main Replacement, Silver Lining, Sewer Lining, 69 KV Poles, the Basset Sub and then IT Stuff, those are ones that, when we sat down with staff, they were the highest need, Bear Stele Main and Sewer Lining being probably the two highest. Those two projects, those are citywide, that 10 million and 8 million, that is to do a project in the entire city. We will apply for that amount. If we don't get that much, we will take whatever we can. As an FYI, for Sewer Lining, we budget $200,000 a year. That doesn't go nearly as far as it used to. And then Bear Stele Main, we budget $60,000 a year, and that's enough to keep the KCC off our back. So I guess if you have any questions, the department heads are here. I'm happy to try and answer any I can. You have, you have all the info there, whether it's a grant or a loan for one, city match, any notes? You can see the applications. Well, three of them are rolling. One is in January, and then for the Bear Stele Main Replacement, it wouldn't be for a year from now or two years from now. And again, I also want to let you know that if other projects come up in the BIL, we'll be coming back to you as well for feedback on anything else we can find. I think a good example, the Bear Stele Main Replacement, we didn't find anything until we all sat down together and put it up on the screen in my office and just happenstance found it. My dumb luck, I don't know, but it came up there, so I couldn't find anything. I did my research. Mitch couldn't find anything when he did his, and then, yeah, I don't even know how we found it, but we did. Yeah, dumb luck, probably. And then the city match, that is, that's in quotes for a reason. Now, I'm not buying the fact that they're not going to require any kind of match, but if they don't, that's to our benefit. Actually, let me take a step further to with the match. The state of Kansas has allocated $200 million to help fund matches, so we're going to try and apply for that as much as we can. You can see with the 69 KV Pole, the Basset, those are the two that require a match. That one-to-three match, we found that last week when we had our meeting with Thrive. It was one-to-one when we checked, so either we missed something or they changed it in about a two-week span. But if you have any questions, the department heads are here.
Where would you come up with this $500, $100, plus to $1 million for the cities that have...
Oh, that would be in our reserves.
Out of what?
Electric. Out of the electric fund, yeah. That fund's healthy enough. It can handle it.
Okay, when you say 69 pole replacement, are all the poles bad or...
The poles. Which poles are you looking at replacing, Jim?
Don't say bad, no. In need of replacement? Yeah.
Pretty well covered right there. The 69 line goes around the east side of town, goes along the creek and up Kentucky and back into Basset. It was put in in '62 or '63. I do remember it. No. And then in, yeah, around '95, KG and E was back then, A, G, now, but they sold it to us. We took over the line and from the tiebreaker. When they sold it to us, they had aptus come in and test the poles, but as far as I know, we never got to see any of their results on the deal. But we could tell, there's about 10 of them, that they drove big iron plates down beside them and wrapped them, so they're telling you the bottoms are probably bad. But it's kept since '95, too. The rest of them is just because it's an old line down the creek. As Matt said, I don't know as they really need to be replaced, but they would be the old side. In my time here, I've seen two of them go bad. One of them caught on fire and burned it on Kentucky. The only other one was broke, was out by Russell Stover's, and it was a new pole. It was on our new addition that we built in later. So that's about what I could tell you about the pole situation. The 10 probably ought to be looked at within probably five years or so. The other line would be, like I said, whether we could get money to make it worth our time because it's just down along the creek. It's just an easement. We have no real access to it.
So you're saying there is a way to test the poles to see if...
Aptus does some kind of a test. They bore in it, just like you would their highways or anything else. They bore in it, just like you would their highways or anything else, take a core-type deal and test it.
Artland's got a program of some sort that they do because...
Yeah, they didn't do it for a lot of areas.
My yard, you can see a little plastic plug in it, and they go in and test the pole.
So you take a core, look at it, and plug the whole?
Exactly. They just bore in it.
Do you think it would be worth it to do that on that line? Or no?
Yeah, I really...
If we don't get the grant, that might be worth it.
Yeah. If, if you put in and didn't get it or something like that, then maybe ought to test to see. And them 10, like I said, I'm not real scared of them, but you could tell when they do that, that they must have figured that it's something, and usually right at ground level is starting to decay of some kind.
Okay.
But they're, some of them's great bones, too. I mean, you know, in a storm, you can't predict. Like I said, we lost a new one over at one time. You know, that's just part of it.
Thanks, Jim. What about water line replacement? Did we have anything on that? Are we just not addressing it at this time?
We didn't find anything. No, and that's another thing that we just think we're just not looking in the right spot because we found it hard to believe that they'd have all this stuff but not have water line.
Stuff is so hard to read. When you go in there, it is...
Yeah. And then, and then a lot, a lot of the water stuff was loans, too. Well, actually, some, some of it was grants that we found, and, and we don't, you guys know, we don't have much of a match in that fund. That's, that's been thoroughly discussed. And then, and then also, some of the stuff we found, there, there weren't any, any money available at all. That's one of the reasons, that's, that's why this, this is a five-year deal, is that I'm sure we're just not looking in the right spot right now. Ryan? Yeah, he had a question about the... Well, we'll, we'll work on it together.
Have you all met Ryan to do it?
No, no.
So I'm Ryan Michael. I'm the IT Director for the city. So the cybersecurity project is being developed by the Department of Homeland Security, and they basically fund states to enhance their cybersecurity programs. And as part of that, the states get funding and then pass it down to local and tribal governments and stuff like that in the state. So this is the first year we participated a few months ago in the initial kind of discussion around it to get the application submitted. So the state did submit their application. And so we're requesting money for the city to basically build out our backup solution for our data, as well as our disaster recovery solutions around there. And we're looking at replacing and consolidating all of our firewall hardware at all our different sites. And then in addition to that, we are looking at two years of access for cybersecurity training for all city employees. So that's kind of the first step. And the initial payout is in January, and the state of Kansas is getting around $1 million. And they have to pass around 20% of that down to rural communities. So we're, we're going to hopefully get some of that.
Come on, council, we can't let the Philip Brothers get out of coming to the podium. I mean, they, they love speaking, so they're here. Any questions for them? You guys got lucky tonight.
So the $8 million for the sewer lining, where will that leave us on the overall project?
Done. That's city what? That'd be city what?
There you go.
Actually, it's about 50 miles, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's, we have 75 of clay tile.
Covered right now, Mitch?
It's about 50 miles.
75 miles of sewer main, but probably 50 of it is, I'll just throw out there, clay tile. And we have just barely been touching in it. We're throwing $200,000. Last year was the biggest stab we ever took at it. Well, that just shot him a million. So we got a long ways to go in the sewer. I mean, it was just always kind of neglected. You know, if it works, it works, and that's how, that's how we operated. I mean...
Now, my recall on the initial televising of that, there was some that may need to be dug up and replaced. The lining wouldn't work. Where are we at with that in this project?
Well, typically, what, say, when they come in and go do a lining project, they review it all, and then we go in and we dug up probably close to 100-plus spots last, last, or this summer ahead of them. And then all year long, as a heavy rainfall, so forth like that, you know, your infiltration will suck them down, and we'll dig them up then. But, you know, it's, it's just tough to stay on top of it because there's so many places you could go, you know, dig up. We live behind your house.
You just won't replace that whole block.
Yeah, we was behind your house four times.
Yep. In fact, I told the guys that, hey, I'll change that green pipe out for white with black possibly.
Pretty much like I say, it's just crumbling around, around, I mean, down around us. It's outlive this time. We've got every penny of it we're ever going to get out of.
Yeah. So that, that project is $8 million to do the rest of it? And that one is a loan at 1% interest, which is far less of a good deal than the rest of the projects. So if we, if we can get that, I mean, it's a project that, that has to be done, if not now, then eventually. I mean, at 1% rates, pretty good. Can we, can we swing that?
We, we would raise the rate to cover the bond payment before the project as opposed to not.
So we would have to issue a bond just for that project?
What about the lids with holes? Would that cover replacing those, or is that part of it? Because the water intake was an issue?
Usually like your CIP is just for that.
Just for the CIP?
Yeah. Yes, the lining is just for that. Then pretty much once you get, we started out doing the manholes. We went and gunite it all the manholes, and then we started doing the CIP lining, and then you'll, you'll rotate back in to start putting the lids on. But that's not quite as, it ain't like you're just going out there potting a lid on because what we got watered out, and we bought new lids to put on, thought, oh, this is an easy fix. Well, you got to tear the rings out, mess, you know, basically tear the road, have to put them on.
You also have to change the frame. Yeah, just changing the lid, you're basically going to break the manhole. Yeah, you, you have to change the, the rings and the frame as well.
They're just out around enough that cars hit them.
Basically, you're going to cut a diamond shape out around it, put a piece of concrete back around the new ring.
Yeah. And the ones in the alleys, midpoints, they ain't bad. You can dig them up, put rock around them, but for some reason, about three-quarters of them, or probably more than, probably about 90% of them, are somewhere close to a road that you're going to saw a road up. So anyways, we's picking on the gunite and lining the sewer mains right now, then we'll roll back around and do that.
And then, Nick, we, we won't take out a bond. It'll just be money given to us upfront, and then we'll, the payback is 40 years. Yeah, yeah. The payback's 40 years.
If we continue to put back the 200, roughly $200,000 a year for lining, I mean, there's our, our payment if, if we were to do it that way.
Okay, so that's pretty good terms. Like a 40-year payback at 1%?
Yeah. If, if we use the state, state's, what, about 4.1% for what I think the interest rate is?
And you hit that threshold with your rate structure?
Yeah.
I don't know. This may have the same thing.
And our rate structure isn't close to what the state would want us to make.
You got to hit the state average.
The state, state average is 25, 26. Well, I know what mine is, and mine's less than $10 a month.
What's the timeline on all this?
Well, well, some days we can get moving now. The sewer line and the 69 KV Pole, the, the Basset Sub, that's a rolling application. We can do it now, when, within five years. The Bear Steel Main, the application deadline is September 30th of '24 or '25, and then the IT is January of this year.
So it's mostly down the road?
Yeah.
What sort of service is this Bear Steel Main? I've missed that. What sort of service is the Bear Steel Main?
I mean, the service?
Is it gas? Is it water?
Yeah, oh, it's gas, sorry.
Yeah, it's gas.
Sorry, we kind of left that out, but yeah.
Yeah, that's just the main. Now, the services, we've replaced the services on our, as we replace the main, we'll go ahead and put new services in.
Andemeter is all we're putting in, though.
Yeah, but yard lines are, they're kind of on their own unless you reach a 25 cent criteria, and then the city's going to foot it in the zones we've got made up. So...
Yeah, like Matt said, we're meeting the minimum of what KCC, we've never had them crawling up our, on our back, but it could happen if we don't keep spending the money on it.
The way I wrote the O and M manual up, basically, we took Kansas gases and said, this, we're going, just carbon copy theirs, is how we're going to start our Bear Steel Main program. But we go above and beyond it every year before we say, well, if we will lay a thousand-foot, we try to lay half, or we try to lay about a half a mile every year. So every other year, we're taking a mile of main out. So we're ahead of what we say we're going to do, but roughly, it's going to take 20 years to get all of the Bear Steel Main out of Iowa. It's, in a nutshell, is what it's going to take at the pace we're going right now.
Yeah, for a three-man crew, basically, for the project.
Yeah, because, you know, you just, it's a three-man crew, but 90% of the time, one of them three men, three-man crew is in a dump truck hauling debris off or bringing rock back. So you're pretty much down to a one-man crew when you're doing that. Now, like when we're doing sewers, it's all hands on deck because you got to have both dump trucks because, I mean, you ain't digging a small hole. You're, we was ripping holes up to size, the benches up there all the way across. So you need all the dump trucks you can get up there to get it done in a day.
What's our deepest sewer line in Iowa?
Pardon?
What's the deepest sewer line in Iowa?
About 23, 24 foot, right there in front of Race. She's pretty deep there.
That is.
You know it when you climb down that one.
Yeah.
Even where from there back to First Street. You don't want to dig that main.
We can't reach them.
No.
Bottom line, we have no equipment to reach them. But we, we picked off a bunch of them and lined them. There's a few of the deep ones left, but that was one of the first things we did when we started lining, is we lined the deep ones because we knew we could never get to them.
Were they just as bad as the others?
No, honestly, they wasn't that bad, but it's just peace of mind when you go to bed.
Yeah.
They had a lot of roof drains tied into them at the time, too. Back in the day, you know, that was common.
House roof drains?
Buildings, well, I mean, it could be...
Oh, okay.
Dog pin drains went to them even. Back in the day, they'd just plonk a dog pin into them. They'd find the old slop jar in the alley and tie it in that, and they went to, you know, that's the perfect place for a dog pin.
Interesting. Good thing we don't have to dig those up.
So... Or do you need a...
I guess we're just some guidance on if you want us to move forward with all this stuff.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It's money that's going to go...
And that's going to be the plan.
Money that's going to go someplace. We might as well bring some of it back home if we can.
Yeah, and then I noticed it, or noted it here, too, on the agenda sheet, that we probably, very likely, will be back telling you we found this, and we need to act on it, too.
Absolutely.
We also have four projects there that we didn't find any, any money on.
But it's possible that...
Water.
They'll come up at a later date.
Yeah.
But the water tower rehab is the north and south?
North and south, yeah.
Repaints and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. It would be nice to find some lagoon area, area money. That's a big chunk.
Yeah.
Any other questions, council? Okay. Sounds like we go forward. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Moving on to new business, employee holidays, and council, council calendar.
Is that a motion? The motion's on there.
I said the same thing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now ask for council and administrator reports. Let's start over here today.
I don't have much this evening, but in light of the vandalism that happened off of the stadium, what, a week and a half ago? That's the second time in recent months that we've had vandalism down in the Riverside Park area. I don't know how or what we would need to do to be able to install some security cameras or something that would help deter that, but I would like to see something maybe looked into.
Especially on that football field. It gets the brunt of it.
The, the graffiti was over here on the Columbia Metals Building, and I, I just, I think it's a good insurance policy, if anything. And that's all I have to say.
I was going to talk about, she beat me to it. That's all I can say.
Talk about it.
No, I, I want some down there.
Okay.
Whoever's doing this, it's not right.
Sure. Joel?
Well, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I don't know. I don't know what it would look like, but I do think we need to get our heads together on this recycling business. And I personally think it's a great idea, but, you know, with a lot of options out there, I'm sure it'll be a joint venture. And I don't know how the financial, finances will work out, but depending on the value of some of this material, it may not cost us that much. So I've got a lot of thoughts on that, but, you know, maybe we could even start off with a recycling center where people delivered their material to the central location, but you didn't even have to pick it up at first. I, I don't know. I think there's a lot of options, and I think we need to look into it.
It would create...
I've said it before, it's going to be its own utility.
It would have to be, yeah. So, I mean, it's certainly a topic we can discuss to figure things out and show the...
Next year, or is that, oh, that's already a done deal, so?
Done deal. I have no problem having a roundtable to discuss it and see what people think because I think there's a lot more to it than we realize. It's just how do you pull it all together? And then what kind of manpower? Because one of my concerns is, I keep hearing two people can do it, but they had a slew of volunteers that struggled to keep up with it, so I don't know that two people are enough.
Well, I think the county should be on the hook, too.
But it's something we can bring up at a later, later time. But thank you. Anything else? Mark?
We still have five firemen, EMT, trainees going to school. They'll finish up Friday, and then they test out in two weeks. Barely go above our minimum amount of personnel that we need. We're going to need more.
Yeah, well, bringing in five...
Got a shift short, basically.
Yeah. Yeah, bringing in five is going to add, so for three shifts, it's going to add two for two shifts, and then one for another one. So we'd be down another one, two, three, four, five? Yeah, we'd, we'd be down another five, five or so.
Still better shape than we were six months ago.
It'd be a lot better than what we're...
Yeah.
Fire chief and...
Absolutely.
Guys for getting that together, please giving us a chance.
It's, it's been refreshing to see their pictures on Facebook of their training and different things they're doing to see that it's, it's working. So, anything else, Mark? Nick?
I just want to say I, too, support recycling and coming up with a solution. It's something that I pondered for a long time. I had a lot of conversations, listened to a lot of people about, and it's, it's a hard, it's a hard problem to solve, especially from the city side, just because we have a perverse disincentive to recycling as city government because it costs us nothing to take however much we want to the landfill. And anything that we spend to reduce it is just a cost on our side. And that's just it. Like, it's going to cost us money for something, you know, otherwise we have a free resource to the landfill. Now, there's a benefit to not taking as much to the landfill. You know, landfill lasts longer. We, as citizens of the county, spend less developing new cells at the landfill, but that's a very spread-out, mellow benefit that's hard to quantify, and that doesn't benefit the city government, you know, and that. So it's, it's tough, but I, I agree that it's, it's something that people want, and it's something that we need to, to have even more conversations about. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Corey, you have anything for us? Matt, anything else?
Nothing, sir. Nothing, sir.
Roxanne? All right. That'll conclude our items on the agenda. We now need to ask for a executive session for Trade Secrets.
We have to have it in here.
Yeah, it's going to have to be in here.
Matt, or Steve, so...
Okay. Yeah, we'll...
Start at like 6:55 or something. That way, we've got...
Little time.
We can let the, let the people clear up.
Yeah. That'll let us, yeah. We'll take a break here for five minutes.
Well, are you going to go ahead and make the motion?
Oh, yeah, you're going to make the motion to start at like 6:56.